For item 59, it's the Animal Care Workshop. It's a report on recommendations from capacity for care consult by Corret Shelter Medicine Program, Center for Companion Animal Health, University of California, Davis School of Veterinary Medicine.
Mr. Dickinson.
Do you want to raise the podium, Dave? There's a button there on the...
It's on the side here.
Hello, you want to help?
It takes a woman.
That's good, that's good. Good afternoon. David Dickinson, Director for Sacramento County Department of Animal Care. First of all, I want to thank Chair Phil Serna and the rest of the board members, along with county executive staff, for all the past and present support you've given to the shelter over the years. We are a growing shelter, evolving with the times and the years passed here. We've been given the opportunity through funding last year to contract with UC Davis, Corret School of Veterinary Medicine, for an in-depth capacity for care study of our current shelter and the situation that we're in and the practices that we follow. We were fortunate enough to have Dr. Cindy Carsten, Dr. of Veterinary Medicine here today, to provide her findings with, after being at our shelter for several months out there and working with the staff, going through the operation from A to Z, basically. It was an eye-opening experience for us at the shelter. At the end of her study, she had a PowerPoint, a 65-page PowerPoint that covered every nook and cranny of our operation. She's got some opinions and some recommendations that she's going to bring forward. I think you've had a chance to look at her PowerPoint presentation. I'd like to introduce Cindy Carsten at this time to come forward to the podium and explain in detail a little bit about the shelter's operation and her recommendations. Cindy?
I need to be a little shorter. Awesome. Hello, and thank you guys all so much for giving me the opportunity to talk with you today. I am, as Dave said, Cindy Carsten. I'm...do I have control of this?
We hope.
You can give the lights and the sound, too, if you like.
No, this is great. Perfect, thank you. And I did, I had the opportunity to work with the shelter for quite a few months last year. And I want everyone to realize that we get requests from throughout North America, so to do shelter consults, way more than we could ever accommodate all the time. So we had to be very, very strategic in who we choose to work with. So when Dave approached us for a consult, we had to really think about it. So, because we need to work with people where change will be made, where things will get better. So, things have really improved at the county shelter in recent years. They've done a wonderful job. We've seen true increases in the live release rates, which is fantastic. The facility is relatively new, so there's a lot that can be done within the facility. The shelter seems very eager to look at new programs, which is fantastic. This is our community. I live in Sacramento County, so I was very interested in seeing change happen where I live. And to that, we're close by, which is really, really nice, because many times we go to do a consult, we're there for three to five days, and then we leave. And we give them a report and we wish them well. We can offer support the best that we can, but it's much easier when you're onsite. So I really designed this consult to be more interactive. I wanted to stay involved with the shelter. I wanted to help change happen, which is why I set the consult up the way that I did. I did not work alone. I work with amazing, amazing esteemed colleagues. This was the team. This is, this is pretty much our team. We're a very small program, but everyone played their part in helping with the consultation. And I wanted the shelter leadership to be involved. I wanted this to be their consult, so I sat down with them and I asked them, "What's your destination postcard? What do you want from this? What do you want the shelter to look like, to feel like, to be at the end of this?" So that was our first meeting. I wanted to know from them, what do they want? Why am I here? Why are they here? And what do we want to come up with? And this was the goal statement that we all established, that this is who they want to be. And from the beginning, it was really evident that people were struggling to come to work every day. There's a lot of animosity at the shelter, and it was not the working environment that they had all hoped for. So this consult, like many, was not just about the animals, it was also about the staff and the environment that they needed to come to every day and work in so that they could do a good job with all that they were tasked with. And when, I just want to give you guys a little bit of, little bit of information about what we mean by capacity for care. When we talk about capacity for care, we're not talking about holding capacity, okay? We're not talking about the number of kennels, number of cage units that are in the shelter. What we're talking about is providing every animal, every day, with these five freedoms, okay? That is the basis of capacity for care, that if an animal's going to come into our care, we will afford them these freedoms. These freedoms were written in the 1960s in the UK by the Welfare Council, so these were actually to be applied to livestock. Because what it was realized is that when they provide better welfare, they get a better investment, they get a better return on their investment. Well, we have animals living in confinement, just like livestock, and we, too, want a good return on our investment. Our return is healthy animals, both physically and mentally, as well as the positive outcomes for them. So being able to give every animal the outcome that they deserve. And at the basis of that, this, these are the five freedoms that we need to give every single animal. And we provide these by providing humane housing for the whole time that an animal's in our care, and by providing staffing and resources to allow them to meet all of these freedoms. But there's a lot more to these freedoms than what you just see on the surface. So, for example, freedom from hunger and thirst, you would think that that could be accomplished by just providing fresh food and water every day. And while that is the basis for it, if we have animals living in such a way that they cannot access the food and water, so let's say there's another animal getting in their way guarding the food and they can't get to it, we have not met this freedom. Or if animals are housed in such a way that every time they go to the bathroom, they kick litter, or dust, or fecal matter into their food and water, we've not met this freedom. So, these are much more complicated than they might seem. Another thing we need to realize is that having animals live in confinement, any type of confinement for companion animals, is completely unnatural, okay? So asking companion animals to live without normal interactions with people, without normal interactions with their conspecifics, is completely unnatural for them, and is a huge source of the stress that we see in animals in animal shelters. Also, when an animal enters a shelter, we've taken away all of their control over their situation, okay? So we all know, when we don't have control, our anxiety goes through the roof. That's what's created in an animal shelter. Animals lose their ability to control their situation, and they have huge anxiety. So, the freedom to express normal behaviors is exceptionally difficult to accomplish in an animal shelter, so the best way we can accomplish that is to keep them there for as short of amount of time as possible. So we always need to talk about optimizing length of stay, that's giving every animal what they need in only as much time as they need it. Because it's really hard to meet that freedom, and the best way we can do it is to move them through efficiently. So, something we definitely focused on in this consult was looking at all the inefficiencies that are happening in at the shelter, and what we can do to change them, to move animals through quickly. And that's to positive outcomes, okay? Euthanasia is never one of the tools we want to lean on to accomplish our five freedoms. Now, you notice, we like to add a sixth. Because the Welfare Council, again, it was written for livestock, so we knew what the outcome was for those animals, right? Like, we weren't looking to RTO them, or adopt them out. We knew what they were, what was going to happen of them, and that was accepted. We need to add this freedom, because in all that we can talk about for welfare while they're with us, we do also need to focus on outcomes. That we need to give every animal the optimum outcome that they can be afforded, so that's freedom from euthanasia, except for animals that are too dangerous to return to our community and that are untreatable. So, there were lots of things, lots of areas we focused on, because there's a lot of inefficiencies happening at the shelter. I can tell you right now, not every animal, every day is guaranteed the five freedoms. So welfare is definitely being compromised within the shelter walls. So there were many, many recommendations. There were multiple meetings with the senior management to talk about the recommendations, because I wanted to have an active dialogue with them. I wanted to be involved. I wanted them to express their concerns, why things could or could not happen, why they were and were not happening. So that's why it has the form that it had, because I wanted it to be really interactive and that I could help them take the recommendations and implement them. Just so you know, that part of it has been very unsuccessful until this point.
You mean implementation?
Yes.
That hasn't been successful to this point?
No, I've had very little involvement with implementation. I've not...
Okay.
The senior leadership has not sought me out to help with implementation of the recommendations.
Okay, thanks.
So the first, the first and highest priority from the recommendations, and this is a really common scenario that we see in animal shelters, especially municipal ones, is the staffing structure. And currently, there's a director, and then there's a leadership team, I guess you call them, of supervisors, and there's no one in the middle, okay? And that is the position that is lacking right now. And why the implementation is not happening? Because truly, there's no one in the shelter right now with the skills nor the time to do it. It's a huge hole. We see this commonly, and so the recommendation to hire someone to be the DO, or shelter manager, whatever the title needs to be, is what's going to, is what's going to get these recommendations implemented and get change to happen. To that, another large hole is a director of the medical department. The shelter right now is offering, wanting to offer, and kudos to them, a high level of medical care, both in the shelter and in the community, which is absolutely fantastic. But the staffing is not there. So they have goals, but there is no, there are not the resources to meet them. So hiring someone to manage the medical department and give them more staffing is definitely needed. There's a large gap there. Two really important programs to help with optimizing length of stay, so keeping animals moving through efficiently. The first one is daily population rounds, so where people with knowledge of who's in the shelter and decision-making capabilities need to walk through the shelter every single day, place eyes on every single animal, make sure every animal has what they need, both today and as they're moving through. This is how we keep animals from getting lost, both physically, actually getting lost, and figuratively, like just getting lost in the shuffle. And of a shelter of this size, this has to happen. This is how they will be efficient. It is not happening currently. And time is the reason that no one has time to do it, but this is an investment in time that pays for itself a hundredfold and needs to happen every single day. To that, open selection is another program that we recommend shelters have. It allows people to see the animals who are on a path towards adoption, so for animals that we feel are on that pathway, to be adopted out back into our community, that they can be seen from the moment they enter our shelter. That allows people to get interest, so that when the animal becomes available, they can go home. Certainly doesn't mean that the owner can't come and claim them, but we need people to start getting interest quickly, so that they can move out quickly. Intake, the minute an animal steps through our shelter, that's when we need, that's when action happens. That is the most important time. And sadly, in this shelter and in many shelters, very little resources are put into the actual intake, what happens, decisions that are made, how the animal's set up for success. So we really, they need to put more resources into intake, both on the people's side, so interacting with the folks coming in, as well as the animals. There is definitely housing improvements that could happen, and this has nothing, again, to do with the number. It has to do with the type of housing. The five freedoms, the basis for them is humane housing. A fair amount of the housing at the shelter, especially for cats, is inhumane, and it does need to be changed if indeed the shelter wants to be able to offer the five freedoms to every animal in their care. The dogs, believe it or not, there is too much cat housing in the shelter, and I know that would seem strange when you go there and every single cage is full, but guess what? If I gave the shelter more cages, they, too, would fill up. It's not a matter of number, it's, again, it's a matter of quantity, and how many animals move through. If one cat stays for seven days versus 14 days, we can actually help two cats, if they each stay seven days, as opposed to one staying 14 days. Does that make sense? So it's not the number, it's how much time they spend there, and how quickly we can move them through, and the humane housing that we can afford them. So, dogs are pretty squished there, thus forcing them to house animals together. Not ideal, unless it's planned and it's for the benefit of the animals, so we would recommend that they do actually need some more housing for small dogs, and so we could take some cat housing and change it to dogs. But that's on the horizon. We need to be more efficient first. And then finally, just as the medical department needs some guidance and some structure, so does the behavior department. So the recommendation is to work with someone from the outside with the expertise and knowledge to come in and help shape the behavior program, because right now, there's not currently anyone within the shelter with that ability. So the bottom line, things, there are many, many good things, positives, about the shelter. However, unfortunately, many of these positives are not working together, and it's creating an environment of animosity, and frustration, and inefficiencies, that has kind of got the shelter at this point right now, where if change happens positively, they will definitely fall to the side of greatness. And wonderful things can happen, and they can be the shelter that they want to be, and we can achieve that goal. However, if that doesn't happen, I fear they're going to fall the other way into complete chaos. And sadly, in light of some recent things that have happened at the shelter, I feel like that's the way the shelter's actually moving currently. So, it's fantastic, all the things that the shelter wants to be doing. We were so excited to find out that they want to do a return to field program. This is where cats come in, they're spayed and neutered, and they're returned. Fantastic. But what we need to realize is that's like, that's like tier-three sheltering, okay? That's, that's where shelters want to get to. Being out in the community and providing community medicine, that is fantastic. I am thrilled to be in a community that offers that, but again, that's tier-three. Because of the lack of staffing structure, the lack of programmatic infrastructure that's currently at the shelter, because they're striving for level three, level one, the basics of providing humane care to every single animal and affording them the outcome that they deserve, this is getting lost. We are not even doing tier-one sheltering right now, because we're striving for tier-three, and we don't have the resources to do it. So...
Excuse me, I'm going to interrupt Supervisor Tully.
No, I was going to wait till, I just wanted to speak when she's done with her remarks, so...
With all of her remarks, all 25 slides, or...
Oh, no, I'm done.
This is her last slide.
I have, I have one more point to make, and I'm finished.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a 25-slide hard copy presentation of mine.
Oh.
Oh, got it.
I think Dave, Dave's is 25.
I'm just, I'm just sensitized to presentations.
Hers is this, this is Dave's.
Okay. Well, okay. So I am aware that we caused quite a stir when we made the recommendation for the shelter to stop taking in cats. And the only reason that recommendation came was because something has to give. Again, the shelter is up here trying to do these amazing things, but again, there's no staffing, there's no programmatic infrastructure. So lots of things are happening poorly, and instead, we need to focus and do a few things really well, so we can build on these programs and actually do everything we want to do, and do them appropriately, because right now, that's not happening. So the easiest thing to give up, believe it or not, is cats. It made many people unhappy, but that was okay, because it got us noticed, and it got people talking. And it started to be the impetus for change. So, the county will continue to take in cats. Certainly, we do support that. But the program needs to change. The program needs support, and so that's what we're going to be looking at. Because if these programs are going to continue, they need the support so that they can actually happen and happen well. So, questions? Now?
Supervisor Tully.
Yeah, well, I know, and I know that our director's going to give some summary presentation about a number of the recommendations, but I want to just first thank Dr. Carsten and her team, certainly Dave, for his openness to receiving the team to the shelter. And I know, as my colleagues have, I've had a chance to review the report, to see the recommendations, I've had a chance to hear, at least on one occasion, Dr. Carsten's presentation. I would just say, you know, I find it pretty sobering. I, one, I think there are a lot of good things that are pointed out, and I appreciate that, and I acknowledge that. I think this board certainly has been supportive of any number of initiatives, and certainly the funding support and the personnel support to go behind that, and I, you know, county executive office has been involved in those recommendations over the last couple of years. And without getting into specifics right now, because I think, hearing from our shelter director, we had a chance to, you know, match that up with what Dr. Carsten's pointed out as some of the top priorities. But I guess, part of what I want to ask you, Cynthia, is, I noted from your presentation that, and it's stuck with me, because I saw your presentation a few weeks ago when you presented to the community, and that relates to implementing into actually, you know, the ability to hopefully tip in the right direction, because I think you were very straightforward responding to questions the evening that you and Dave presented to the community, and that, too, has stuck with me, that we're at a point, at a tipping point, when it comes to a number of the initiatives, but also to, I think, just the commitment that needs to be there every moment, every day, and that is to the animal welfare, for those animals that are in our custody, that have no one but all of us, whoever that all of us is, to depend upon for all their needs, but certainly, hopefully, to have a good outcome. And that's assuming they come into shelter, because some of the things you recommend are to actually keep some of the animals out of the shelter system by doing things that then take a more proactive initiative on the front end. Certainly, spay-neuter is very front end of that, but as animals are potentially presented to us, to hopefully helping them to have good outcomes before they ever enter the shelter system. My question to you, though, is, is that in looking at efficiencies and the effectiveness and the hearing to the, I'm going to say the six principles, because I want to ask you about the sixth one in a moment, too, but would, are you willing to help us with the implementation? Because I heard that, you know, it concerns me that, in responding to the earlier question, that you said, that no one sought you out relative to implementation. And again, you know, this report, obviously, is being presented to this board today and to the broader community, but to me, that's key. And again, a lot of these findings have been available to, certainly to our staff and to this county since you completed your initial review in June. So we had six months pass, not that some things haven't been implemented, and Dave will get to those, but I guess, could you elaborate a little more? Because that point of, everything I've heard thus far really concerns me, because that's, that's the progress forward and hopefully beginning to find our path in the right direction versus dipping into chaos, to use your words a moment ago, so...
At this point, I will remain hopeful.
Okay.
For change to happen, though, there has to be, to go back to the first, there has to be this position created. This is why change has not happened. Again, there's no one to do it. So if this position is created, I am willing to help. I have been sought out now from the county to help with implementation, of which I will be willing to do if there's someone to carry it out.
Okay, so, so your ability, I mean, I was hearing you said willingness, but your ability to then help us is, is, at least in good part, contingent upon having someone that director of operations capacity, obviously, if someone is...
Or at least that that's coming, to carry out the work that I will help start to develop. But, yeah, I want to, I want, I want to see the shelter succeed. I want to see the positive change. I know it can. These programs have been implemented in other shelters. We know they work. And, but someone has to do it. They don't, they don't create themselves. And then, staff has to be brought on board. They have to be given the tools and the training, and they have to be held accountable. And they have to know that change is coming, and they can choose to be a part of it or not.
Okay, and not to jump ahead, because I'm going to give Dave the opportunity to respond to the recommendations, but, you know, in a number of those, as we'll see in a moment, there are, you know, you know, to be looked at, to be reviewed, and, you know, I, you know, those are fair statements, and I think fair assessments of some of the things, but, you know, I see a number of them relating to additional staffing. And yet, I heard you, and again, and your report is, it's, you know, it's embedded in here about efficiencies, about, you know, what we do with our time, and to the basic elements of humane treatment of the animals, and obviously, to the point of getting them out of there to good outcomes. You know, great preference to, you know, getting out of there alive and healed if they came in sick, you know, they're hopefully, you know, in a fashion that can be adoptable to whoever that adopter is, or whoever rescued that animal. What's your sense, then, again, without jumping too far ahead, about, because that's embedded in the recommendations we're going to see, the response to recommendations, in my sense, from what you said, is that better use, more efficient use, and different application of way people spend their time in that shelter, to both serve the public and the animals, may get us, you know, they're a good part of the way, anyway, rather than just continue to add positions, beyond what's being recommended in your recommendation and discussed in your report, so...
Right, and many, there has been a lot of staffing additions at the shelter, but they've been kind of your first-line care staff, which is good, but the whole goal would be that you actually need less of those when you are more efficient. The, the true gaps in staffing right now are in leadership roles, in management. The, the management structure is not allowing the shelter to be efficient, to hold the new staff accountable, to train them and hold them accountable for what's being asked of them every day. And because of all these inefficiencies, folks are showing up to work unsure of what to do, feeling like they have 12 hours of work to complete in eight hours. So, an environment is definitely not being created where people can come to work and do a good job every day. So, we need to fix these inefficiencies. Less animals in the shelter every single day doesn't mean we're helping less over time, but any one time, we need to help less animals, because it's not serving anyone to be at max capacity, even over capacity where they are now. That's why the five freedoms are not being met, that's why welfare is being compromised. So, the two biggest gaps are those two positions there. And honestly, if, when, we'll say when, we'll be optimistic, new programs are put into place, and resources are given and allocated appropriately, the goal would be that they don't actually need as much lower staffing, or that they could be reallocated to other, to finding owners, and so not doing as much daily care, because when you have less animals, you can spend less time doing that.
So, yeah, it makes sense. So if you were assisting us, you would give us the benefit of that evaluation. Obviously, there are others involved, certainly Dave is director, and I know Mr. Leonard is director of municipal services. So you would assist us with, you know, looking at, you talked about the structure, about the inefficiencies in the structure, but also how it contributes to dysfunction, my word, but that's what I heard you say. But you would assist us with that on an ongoing basis, assuming we were willing to implement. You would, as far as assessment of position, huh?
I will do my best, yeah.
Okay. Well, let me just, I want to ask two more questions, and then we'll hear some more, and I'll probably ask some more later on. But as relates to, I'm going to go to the dog side of it and then come back to the cat side of it. As relates to the dogs, and I know that Dave has been before this board on numerous occasions, budget and otherwise, and I think has acknowledged that, you know, from the day we opened that shelter, we've been, quote, overcrowded, probably chronically at times. And I know I asked you at the community session, because I'm very concerned that we, not to be harsh about it, but that, you know, that we kill for space, that we have over time, and that, rather, in going to your sixth bullet point there about, you know, that, you know, as it relates to euthanasia, that, you know, you would have a very limited framework. And you answered the question when I asked you that at the session. I asked you, "Do you believe we're killing for space?", and you said, "Yes." I think that's what you said, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I, animals are being euthanized because of lack of management and programmatic infrastructure. If you want to call that space, because they're being, because of inefficiencies, yes, animals are being euthanized.
Okay, well, that's, again, I want to probably characterize, I don't want to, you know, to misstate that, but, and if I could take that one step further, then, but if you were to realize those efficiencies and to manage in such a way that the focus was on, one, you know, keeping animals out of the shelter, if that was the right approach, but secondly, once they're in our care, that, then the focus is on getting good outcomes and moving them through the shelter system quickly. through the shelter system quickly, in a way that, again, doesn't jeopardize the welfare of the animal nor the public in the event that, you know, there's questions about the animal's temperament, or whatever, or their ability to thrive in the community. But, so that's where, again, taking the medical team along with the management team, the community support to receive from volunteers, and certainly the staff, that's would be, I guess, I would take that to be a big, a part of the shift in the focus then of the shelter.
Yes. And I think the shelter needs to lay out clear expectations of all stakeholders, all interested parties, all participating parties, and then clear written protocols and implementation and accountability. These are all things that are lacking, that are creating the environment that's being created out there.
Okay. Just one other related note on, and Dave, you might get prepped up to answer this question as well. But when we were in these chambers, this time two years ago, we entered into contract with the city of El Grove, again, as a partner, and agreed to take their lost and/or stray pets. And they have their own animal services, so they provide those sort of infield in the city. And we basically threw that, I think, of taking some 1,200 or 1,400 additional animals into the shelter system. And as a part of that, we had a safeguard. It was very, very important, in my view, that allowed this county to reach out to our partner, recognizing they're paying for those services in order of almost three quarter million dollars a year, and that, you know, they're entrusted with that responsibility, and I think we're fulfilling that. But that, there was a safeguard there that allowed us, at any given time, for any period of time, to call El Grove and say, we're full. And we, you know, you need to hold your animals. That was clearly built into the contract. I don't know how many times we've done that. I don't know if you looked at that. But when we're chronically overcrowded, and to your point about animals that perish because of either inefficiencies, because of decisions that have to be made relative to this animal over that animal, that concerns me. And I don't know if that came to your attention, if you looked at that, because there's no shame. That was in that contract, and that was part of the deal. And I don't know, I know we've done it on a couple of occasions for a brief period of time, but in my view, if we are chronically overcrowded and have-
Not the fire alarm.
Okay, answered phone?
Please silence your device.
Yeah, somebody's phone, yeah. That, that was there for a reason, and that if it meant for weeks or months at a time that we couldn't receive more animals, then it might mean that El Grove would have to revisit their relationship with us, or we'd have to revisit that. And I guess my question to you, were you aware of that, that that was a safety valve? Now, we don't get hundreds of dogs or cats coming in at any given time. They may only be an order of magnitude of two or three, or five or six in any given week. But when we're making decisions about shelter animals, and some of them are being basically killed, euthanized, because we're so crowded, the socialization becomes, you know, difficult to accomplish, and we're making decisions about animals. And so were you aware that that was a measure that was built into our arrangement with El Grove?
I was not, but simply not taking animals from El Grove is not going to solve the problem.
No, no, that was-
But, but, but to you, but you want to be able to take the animals who need you, right? So, and they don't know geography. So they don't know if they're from El Grove or some other part of the county, right? So I don't, I wouldn't, I understand that that is a safety valve, but I'd rather look at other things that we can correct, so that the animals from El Grove who do need to come in, and I'm not saying they all do, and that's something we really need to look at, is that we only have animals coming in who actually need us, who we're actually providing a service for. Because an animal coming in and getting sick, we are not providing a service, right? It's like, would you take your car to mechanic who broke it? No. That's a bad business plan. So that is not the plan we're searching for, for our animal shelter. But if they need us, and we can improve their outcome, they need to come in. So regardless of-
Where'd it come from, though? Yeah, I don't, I couldn't agree with you more about that, but I-
So, so I don't, I don't know the bad will that would come from saying, we're not going to take them. Like, I don't know, because I don't know what their options are. I think we should, I mean, if in the interim, they have another option, and that could stop some flow, I think it's not a bad thing to look at. But there are definitely bigger things that we can work on, more important programs and infrastructure that we can put into place, so that we can still help the ones from El Grove who do need it.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that. Let me just ask one other question at this point, then. And this relates to the cats, and to, again, I appreciated that, you know, you really, you know, I think grappled with the recommendation that you did relative to trying to, you know, not only do things that we do, do them well, but certainly with regard to the return to field program. And as I mentioned at your public workshop, that, you know, it was a year ago this time, we sat out at the animal shelter, and, you know, one of your colleagues and others talked about that program, and immediately we had embarked on it, and I think have returned some approaching thousand cats to the field, some 900 or something this, this year thus far. And I know that in the spirit that you brought that recommendation, and recognizing that what we're going to, you know, that as you said a moment ago, you know, our staff didn't concur with that recommendation, that we can want to maintain that, and certainly get the quality oversight, that I think was so important. And I know that was pointed out at the meeting a year ago, that, you know, you had veterinary input, that you had, you know, staff, that there was good tracking of the, of the animals when they came in. We microchip ours. I know there's been questions that have been raised about, you know, are there any additional vaccinations given and so forth, and spay and neuter, but that we're returning those cats to the community, you know, we embarked upon it, we intend to maintain that. Do you think in the current environment, then, recognize we're going to, you know, unless we choose to do something different, we're going to retain that, and recognizing your recommendation is tough as it was, you still think we're going to be able to get there with your assistance and the commitment of our staff?
I hope so. It was wonderful a year ago when we got to talk to everyone. It's fantastic that the county embraced return to field. Not everyone does. In fact, generally, we're standing in front of, we're in this environment trying to convince people to do it. And we didn't have to do that here, which was fantastic. So kudos for supporting it. However, you can't just say we're going to do it. It's like the program was made, but there was nothing to support it. It was like, yes, we want to do it, but we don't have the humane housing. We don't have, we don't really have the surgery to do it. We can't even take care of the animals we already have, much less take more in. So while it was well intentioned, and we were so excited that Sat County wanted to do a return to field program, it wasn't actually a program. It was just a commitment to do it, but nothing to support it. So it did come with much fretting and regret to have to say, stop, stop taking cats. But really, when you can't do the program well, the best next option is to actually do nothing, instead of compromising welfare, not only of the cats coming in, but of the dogs, because we're focusing on the cats, so it compromises the welfare of everyone in the shelter. I need to be an advocate for animal welfare, and of the people who are caring for them. I can't do that with all that the shelter is trying to do and do poorly. So something had to give. Now, if we're willing to look at it, if we can look at other programs to start being more efficient, I think they can do a return to field program, because all the pieces are there.
What if you assign somebody to run it? What if you assign somebody to your barn and community cat program, and that you have the efficiency built in with our partner ASN, and that you have, you know, that it's given the focus? Is that what you're saying, that then it could work?
That's a start. But yeah, you need the surgery to support it. You need volunteers to put them back. The whole idea of a return to field program is it's supposed to focus on cats that would have ended up in the shelter anyway. It's not for people to bring you cats that they're trapping. That's not a return to field program. That's separate. Those cats should never enter the shelter, okay? This is for cats who have been, that someone is concerned about or feels as a nuisance, and we can educate in the community about these cats. They come in, we sterilize them, they go back within three days. This taking two to three weeks to put cats back is completely inappropriate and inhumane, and it's not the intent of the program. So yes, putting someone in charge of it to help with inefficiencies is one thing. To communicate to the community what the goal of this program is, is another huge piece. And then working with other resources in the community to help people whose cats cannot come into the shelter. So there's a lot of pieces that need to be in place that should have been in place a year ago, right? But live and learn, right? Like, yay, they were gung ho to do it, but let's, let's step back now and actually make it a program, right? So I had another point, but I lost it. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Well, so just taking that one step further, though, then, as you talk about, you know, senior staff positions, i.e. Director of Medicine, and Medical Director, and Director of Operations, would you see if someone's going to be in charge of a, a very robust and effective, you know, return to field program? That would be a paid position? Versus just adding folks? I mean, again, you know, not that there wouldn't be a volunteer that couldn't do that, but I think that if we're talking about elevating the effort, it would seem to me that those positions, and that part of the assessment, I guess I would, you know, hopefully you would give us, and you've done as backdrop here, but that's where I'm, you know, when I look at getting animals out of there alive, it's the foster rescue work, it's the, you know, working with the various species that come into the shelter, it's working on the return to field, it's working with the rescues and all that. And yet, we have kind of management positions that are, you know, to start with. But it seems to me that if you're going to shift and get that cultural change, it's so important, that then you're going to need to look to maybe non-traditional types of positions that, you know, people are compensated for. I mean, they got the commitment and the passion for it. But I mean, so that's why, my question is, is that the direction shelters are heading?
Oh, yeah, it is. So, but I think where we need to start is seeing if we can get these two management level positions, and then look at who's there. Because there have been a couple of positions filled even since I've been there in June. And then as we start becoming more efficient, hopefully it will free up people's time. But yes, I do think there needs to be someone committed to the return to field program to make it an actual program. So, but is there someone already there that can be re-appropriated to that? Possibly. I just, I don't think we know that yet, until we focus on other things. I think there definitely needs to be more focus on keeping animals out, too, so.
I want to ask one more question, and for now, and that is, it goes back to the euthanasia. That thought has occurred to me that particularly as we've moved towards a more, you know, saving more animals, both surgically but also behaviorally, and I think that on the medical side, we've done some excellent things, and we scramble. It puts us behind on the spay neuter piece, which is equally important. But as it relates to the euthanasia, that, you know, rather than just having one person make that call, or even just two people, that you talk about behavioral team on the behavioral side of this, I'm wondering about, and I don't know how you term this, whether it's a ethics team or whatever, that you have your medical personnel, your shelter personnel, whoever's working with your species-specific cats or dogs or rabbits, or what, you know, those are the preponderance of animals that are in the shelter, that, you know, rather than this, kind of this ordering system, or I mean, if an animal's really injured or ill and can't be saved, that's, those are medical decisions that are pretty self-evident, I imagine, in most cases. But on the behavioral side, or if you're making choices, if you're crowded, and you're looking, even with your efficiencies, that, you know, you have a team approach to making that, so that the back and forth, it's important. When you're making a life and death decision, which that's what it is, for an animal that has no voice, and the only advocate it has is anybody in the shelter who would say, well, this one's is really worth saving versus this one, because of whatever circumstance, maybe the one doesn't make it out of here alive, I guess. How do shelters deal with that? Because it's, you know, as I've seen the evolution here, and again, I, you know, I'm very grateful that we're to a much better live release rate. I want good, positive outcomes, not just, you know, live releases, but that's, that's the basis for. How do shelters deal with that? Because it would seem to me, as much as the behavior is important, is that that life and death decision resting just with one or two people puts a lot of burden and responsibility on that particular person, which, you know, I'm not so sure I'd want to carry that weight every day of my, you know, work career. But given that, what's, what recommendation would you have as relates to how those decisions are made, and who makes them, and some consultation versus just, here's the list today, we need X amount of space, and, you know, we got to make some tough decisions?
Which unfortunately is the way it's been done, because of, again, lack of-
I get it. I don't like it.
The very first recommendation comes back to rounds. Rounds have to happen. So we're starting to think of an animal's pathway from the minute they come in. Again, well, not again, I don't even think I've mentioned this yet, but more adoption, putting more animals up for adoption at this organization is not what's going to solve this organization's issues with inefficiencies and getting more animals out alive. There's many other programs that have to be in place. We need to keep animals out. We need to get them back to the owners that already had them. So the whole goal is that we would have less decisions to make on the difficult ones. So it, it shouldn't just be on one person, but protocols have to be in place, to which, from my understanding, and I could be wrong, but many times I asked for written protocols, to which I was given none. I was not afforded any written protocols of any type. So that's not true. I eventually got the euthanasia one.
Eventually being when? When you asked, from the time you asked for it to when you got it?
Oh.
Months?
Yeah. But that, that became a focus later, because I was asked to look at that specifically. But it is, it is a burden to bear for someone, and it shouldn't just be one person's decision. But, but it should be thought about proactively, that, and a lot of times, too, though, you can also look at it as adoption criteria, right? Because we tend to focus on euthanasia, but instead, if we focus on who do we feel comfortable putting up for adoption, who do we feel comfortable having back in our community? Who can we help? Like, what ability do we have? How long can animals actually stay here? And we start focusing on that and the positives, then it kind of helps make the decision easier on the other end. So, but I think there's a lot of room to help animals, again, in other ways. So this would need to be yet another program that actually gets developed, and how we make these decisions. But starting with rounds is imperative, so that we're not faced with the decision just at the end, but that we're, we're helping the animal throughout their whole pathway.
Okay. Thanks, Dr. Carson. I may have some questions.
Questions from the speaker, before we hear from Mr. Dickinson. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Cindy, for your presentation. Thank you for being so detailed in that, and for the recommendations you've made before the board here. I, too, am in agreement with Cindy, with her recommendations, that we do need more leadership staff out there to direct the work to those below and take on some of the very high priority issues that the shelter deals with on a day-to-day basis. We haven't mentioned it yet, but the shelter is, is made up of two different programs, the shelter program and then the field program. And we do put a lot of emphasis into the shelter itself, but those in management positions right now, the supervisors and seniors, along with myself, are very involved with the field department as well. So I just want the board to recognize the fact that we are dealing with more than just the shelter responsibilities, when we talk about day-to-day responsibilities. Cindy has recommended some, some things as far as staffing goes, hiring of a Director of Operations or a Shelter Manager. I can, as you can see in the slide there, I totally agree with the hiring of a Director of Operations, as well as another full-time veterinarian that can act both as a medical director, as well as do rounds for the shelter, and even perform surgeries when needed. They will be able to create the protocols for the medical division that all med staff can follow on a daily basis, so there's no discrepancies on how an animal will be treated, and what, what will be treated and what won't be treated in the shelter environment. She talked a little bit about developing an animal behavior department. We did have Amy Sadler come out, respected dog behaviorist and proponent of dog playgroups, where shelter dogs are brought into a large exercise pen area, and they're allowed to interact with one another, so we can see what their tendencies are, make sure that they are animal-friendly, dog-friendly, people-friendly. And that's been going on at, at the shelter now for the past month and a half or so. Our PB SOC, our Pitbull Socialization and Obedience Crew, along with Delise Gannaway, has been spearheading that effort. We do get staff out there from time to time, from their busy in-shelter daily duties as well. But the goal is to come up with a, a different way of doing dog behaviors, to ready them for, or to determine whether or not they are ready for adoption, or if they're not going to make it to the adoption floor. I do have a contract being written right now for an additional behaviorist coming out from back east in January to do staff training on dog behaviors, dog posture, body language, and so forth, so that we can get a better understanding of the animals that come into our shelter. Our employees will be better trained to move forward with that and do dog evaluations along with the- trained to move forward with that and do dog evaluations along with the play groups. We've got a lot of new staff out there right now that haven't gotten a lot of training in that area. So, I think it's very important that they go through that. So, we'll be doing that in, in January as well. There were a lot of recommendations for facility modification. One of the main ones was our intake area. We currently have one intake area to deal with both dogs and cats. It's, it's been that way since the shelter was built. It was designed that way. It's something that we're very aware of, that there are some problems associated with it. But we have staff doing certain things to prevent unnecessary confrontations out there. We will look to create maybe possibly a cat-specific intake area once we decide that we can give up some of the cat rooms possibly if our numbers come down. Our return to field program does get bogged down from time to time due to the numbers of cats coming in, the availability of surgery slots. So, I think when Cindy was doing this capacity for care study, we had had anywhere up to 300 some cats in the shelter. And a majority of those were candidates for RTF, which we couldn't get to the surgeries in time. So, they were there for a week, maybe two, in some instances. I'm glad to announce right now, we are caught up in that program. Cats that came in on the 12th are being, getting their surgery on the 15th and 16th and scheduled to go back out. As long as we can keep up with the surgeries, the cats won't have to stay there for an extended period of time. We do have someone else monitoring that program. The foster rescue feline assistant is coordinator assistant is heading up that. She also does a lot of volunteer work at the shelter. She's kind of streamlined it with some surgery tables and requests. So, we've got some new forms that the staff are following and we'll do everything we can to, to, to keep that program moving. It's a very important program for the community. It gives those in the community that are having problems with, with cats an opportunity to bring them to us. We can spay neuter them, get them returned out there where they've been living their lives as healthy adult cats. And I think it's important that we, we keep that momentum going. If we were to suspend it, we would lose, lose traction and we'd have far many more cats down the road than we need. I'm also going to use the funding the board gave to us for off-site spay-neuter operations. We're going to enter into a contract with both the SPCA and ASN next door to do free cat spay and neuters so that people in the community and as well as feral colony caregivers with cats can bring their animals to those facilities for same-day alteration and return rather than bring them to our shelter and expect us to hold them for a period of time. So, we'll be looking at that in the very first part of the new year.
Supervisor Intoli?
Yeah, Dave, just on the cat program, you heard me ask Dr. Carson earlier about, you know, the position, if, you know, the community cats, barn cats program, and maybe you're going to get to this later on, although I don't think it's specifically mentioned here. Again, recognizing there's a lot of to-dos here, what's your take on the position of having a position that actually would be responsible for that to oversee, I mean, different elements that were mentioned beyond just, you know, the, the intake and tracking there was the community interface and so forth. Do you see that as something that...
You're asking if a new position should be created for that, for that program?
Yeah.
It would certainly help that program if someone could be specifically responsible for it and focus on it rather than doing many other things.
Right.
I mean, absolutely.
Okay. So, that's, that's in the mix. All right. Thank you.
Another way to control the intake at the shelter is to initiate a managed intake program. Cindy talked about controlling the number of animals coming into the shelter. One of those things is owner surrender, maybe hotline, or, or just notify the members of the public that, that the county will not take owner surrenders just anytime they feel like it's necessary for them to give up an animal. That we would ask them to call us ahead of time, tell us the reasons why they need to surrender the animal, and then hopefully we can give them some resources, some tips and some, some of the ability and the resources. And, and if it's just plain food, you know, if they, if they just don't have the, the financial ability, maybe we could help them out for short periods of time to, to prevent those animals coming to the shelter until they get back on their feet and are able to do so.
Just give me, Dave, how much money was going to be available for the, under the amount we authorized for the SPCA and ASN? Was that $125,000 total?
Yeah. I don't think, there's not quite that much left in that fund. But I know last year we provided about $85,000 or so to ASN, and that lasted about five and a half months with the community cat spay it forward program. So, I think we need to divide the 125 or what's left of it between two organizations so that ASN isn't inundated with all those cats and, and SPCA can help out. They're far enough apart where people from the south area would be a little bit easier for them to, to reach that destination. And I think actually SPCA has probably more resources, more veterinarians and technicians to, to tackle that issue. They have a, they have a feral cat clinic every Sunday and they do feral cats during the week as well.
Well, we funded some of that. I, you know, we put some community money towards that as well to help with some of the zip codes in the far south part of the county.
Right.
So, okay. So, would you get, when, again, not for today, but I don't know how much money is available, but what's what remains for the fiscal year and how that's going to be apportioned and, you know, details on that program. I know you're looking right after the first of the year to re-engage that. But I think it's, that's a key piece to hopefully stemming some of the future inflow to the shelters.
Right. Yeah. We'll, we'll allocate that money and, and monitor and see how that program works. And then come, come budget cycle, we'll be talking to you folks again about that to try to sustain it and keep it moving. I'm going to skip forward a few of these things in the, trying to take some time off the, off the agenda here. In the holding periods, we did reduce the holding period to 72 hours a while back. So, we're not holding animals for five or six days like previously. Feral cats, there is no minimum hold time. As soon as we can give them into surgery, we do that, which helps the return to field program. Litters, two or more, we've always made those available to the public right away for adoption, both dogs and kittens, puppies and kittens. We have implemented the open selection process. We do have both sides of our shelter open now to members of the public. They can come in and view both the adoptable animals and animals still in their stray period that will become available so that they know when to come back on any given day if they're interested in an animal that's not quite ready yet. We don't, number five there, develop a, an adoption hold or program. We don't do that. We prefer to just let the adopters know what day they can come back for any animal that they're interested in. We did have a, a hold policy at the old shelter for animals, and it got to be too, too cumbersome with people signing up on lists and not showing up and, and saying they were on a list, but they weren't on a list. So, I think we need to stay away from that. If people just show up on the day that the animal's available, I think that works best for right now. Daily population rounds, that's a, a big recommendation by Dr. Carson. I, I agree that that needs to be somehow established. However, right now with the medical responsibilities, it is not feasible right now for our veterinarian that's on duty to go around with a vet tech and a foster rescue person and a senior or supervisor each morning to look at every animal in the shelter. We do have a, a program in place and we've had it for, for a couple of years now. It's called a medical to-do, whereas anybody that sees an animal that needs, needs medical care or examination by a veterinarian, they put a medical to-do in the system. That creates a report. And every day, the veterinarians, after their surgeries, they will create that report. And then whether it has 30, 40, or 50 animals on it, they'll go with an RVT and go to assess each one of those animals on the report. And that's what keeps the, the progress going as far as animals that need something above basic care. Thank you. So, we will continue with that. The problem with that is it's done at the end of the day, and it's, it's medical dues that were put in up to 24 or 48 hours previously. The veterinarians don't always have enough time at the end of their day to go see 30, 40, 50 animals and take care of their, their needs that way. So, the veterinarians are staying late. They're working a lot of hours overtime. And if we had a daily, daily rounds performed by a shelter operations manager along with an RVT or a vet tech of some kind, that might help the situation out quite a bit.
Mr. Chair, I just, Dave, while you're on that slide...
Yeah.
Because again, as you said, Dr. Carson, I think even when she concluded her comments, came back to this as being a critical and essential element. And I, and I get the challenges that you're trying to meet currently and certainly over the years passed. But, you know, the response that's here, in addition to what you just said, says, "Well, with additional medical staff, it may become more feasible, yes, to maybe do some of the medical piece of it." But there's, as you just said, more to that. So, I guess one of the things that to me is going to be really key because this goes into adoptions, it goes to euthanasia, it goes to the general welfare of the animals in the shelter. And, you know, of the many points that you're addressing, Dr. Carson's made, this seems to me to be a real key pivot point. And it's not just director of operations, not just an RVT, it's not just medical staff. There needs to be a commitment. Everybody's responsible for animal welfare in that shelter.
Right.
You know, to one degree or the other, and whatever their role and responsibility, including volunteers. I mean, you know, and whether it's a specific animal or a group of animals or a daily round. And I think that needs to be key, and it doesn't mean people do the impossible. But I guess around this, beyond just saying, you know, "We may take this, we may take that." To me, Dr. Carson's going to be retained, and we're going to look at actually implementing this. To my point earlier, I want to see, you know, what's, if you need additional staff or you need to reassign staff or whatever, again, that's not the job this board does directly. That's what I want to know. How do you get to a point where every day, in addition to things we're already doing, but to her point about the basic level of, you know, the five, six principles, the bullet points, are we meeting those every day as a measure of, I think, success? But certainly the animals won't be able to voice it. They might give us a, you know, a polite bark or, you know, a purr once in a while. But we're going to know if we're doing this, from what I take from the report, what you've said, and again, and many times we've visited about this, this to me is key. And I think then I've got a better understanding today about how that fits into getting animals out alive. And, you know, good outcomes, obviously there's a lot of advocacy that's going on that part. But to me, this is really key. So, I would say that from a standpoint of management and whether it's director of operations or whatever, that this needs to be a real focus, not just from an efficiency standpoint, but, you know, in getting it done. And you don't ask people to do the impossible. But I'm not so sure of the response here, which is just a summary that, you know, just additional medical staff, that's not the, that's not the entirety of the answer. And that's not what you said either. I get it.
Right.
So, I don't know if you've got more thought about this, but this seemed to be very key. I mean, beyond any facility, you know, modifications and protocols, but this would seem to be a very key piece.
It is key. And that's why we've, the medical dues can be entered by volunteers or staff. So, it all starts at intake where they're doing the cursory exam. If they find something wrong with the animal, they'll put a medical to-do that'd be followed up by med staff. The, the problem we have right now is if, if a veterinarian, one of our veterinarians is involved with the daily shelter rounds in the morning and they go through those 30, 40, or 50 animals that need the, the attention of a vet and an assessment or treatment prescribed or whatever, then they're not going to have the time to do the surgeries in the later part of the day. And that's what we're always struggling with, trying to get the spay-neuter surgeries done so that the animals can go home. So, it's a constant battle between getting the healthy ones that are adopted, neutered, and spayed so they can go home, as well as take care of the animals that aren't ready for adoption, getting them ready on the medications or getting them the treatment. So, it is a battle.
Yeah.
And it's something that we need to look at, you know. It's a struggle for both, both veterinarians that are there now and their, and their support staff.
Well, how about the utilization? Because anything that's being recommended here is not going to happen for at least several months. I mean, you know, certainly director of operations nor medical director.
Right.
But we, you got additional authority last week, certainly as related to contract vets. You know, my view is, again, we've given authorization, budget authorization, along with the authorization to call those folks on it, is to have, if you need to have two or three in any given day. I mean, I mean, you only do so many surgeries. I get the physical limitations.
Right.
But if you need to do wellness rounds, then have those folks come in there. And it's not without a cost. But if, if this is going to help us get to where we need to get in the interim, that would seem to me to be at least part of the answer.
Right. And that's part of what we've been doing. This week, we have two vets in the shelter today, tomorrow, and I believe on Thursday as well. And if there's only a certain amount of surgeries that need to be performed, then they will do their rounds earlier and be able to get to the, all the to-dos. And, you know, we can shake that up a little bit, talk to the veterinarians and see what, what their preference is on how to treat the animals or look at the animals, whether it be in the AM or the PM. On the sanitation slide, number two there, it says, "Use Axcel as a sole cleaner disinfectant." We've been using Axcel for the past year now. That is our, our one and only source of disinfectant for right now. So, and we are spot cleaning the dog kennels right now to see how much time that might save and where we can reallocate some of our resources. That's just started in the last three weeks or so. Number three and four kind of go together, spot clean and deep clean only. We've got paperwork being developed for the clean versus dirty kennels. We've also got some cage card holders that tell when a dog is out of its cage on a walk or in socialization and not to use that cage up, leave it empty for the dog's I'm going to kind of breeze through a couple of these things. Housing needs dogs versus rabbits. She's requesting only two dogs per kennel or habitat. Unfortunately, we do have more dogs in the shelter than we can safely handle or, or put in separate kennels. So, we do add two or three dogs to a large kennel. We sometimes have four, as many as five dogs in a, in a big habitat room. There is enough room in there for the dogs that we have in there. It's suggested that we create a separate area within the habitat for elimination processes and processing. So, we can come up with some dividers of some kind to, to cordone off part of those habitat rooms so that one is a living quarters and one is where the animals can do their business, so to speak. There are some recommendations to change some cat rooms into dog housing units. While Cindy was here, we had close to 300 cats. We're now down to about 134. It's the time of year finally where our cat intake is slowing down and we're not going to have the huge numbers for the next, I hope for the next month and a half or so. We'll see. Spring will be here before we know it. And if we can't, if we can't stop the, the cats from coming into the shelter or give the community other avenues to take the community cats, then we'll be in the same situation come springtime of not enough cages for the cats that are coming in. We did change one of the habitat rooms, not the largest one, but one of the habitat rooms into a rabbitat room where the rabbits can roam freely and potential adopters can see that rabbits are good household pets as well. Cat housing, slide eight there. She's wanting to do, open some of the stray cat rooms up to, to public viewing and moving, covering the windows in the halls and hanging towels. We haven't done that yet, but we do have volunteers that are readily available to take, to stay in those rooms while they're open so that members of the public can walk in, look at the cats. The cages right now, if we open the rooms up, the cages are not lockable. And we fear that there would be too many cats running around loose in the, in the, in the rooms. That would cause, can cause unnecessary bites when people try to pick a cat up that didn't want to be picked up. So, we're trying to err on the caution on the side of safety there. There's a thing called portalizing cages to expand the size. I've talked to Cindy recently about doing that with some of the bank cages. That's where, where you can open up, instead of having 12 cages in a bank, it reduces it to six with a, with a portal that you can open and close so the cat has access to both sides. So, it has twice the living space. That would be in the back for, for feral cats and community cats probably, as well as up in the adoption area. She's requesting three of the cat habitats be set aside for kittens and fast-track cats. Currently during the, the spring and summer months when we have a lot of kittens, we open up what we call the rotunda. We put tables out with collapsible cages on them. And we can put eight to 10 collapsible cages out there with the kittens that provide the public with a upfront look at the kittens and they get adopted quite quickly from there. We tend to save the, the habitat rooms for the adult cats that need more exposure as well. There was a need for some clear signage at the shelter. We did create signage when we opened up... We did create signage when we opened up the dog kennels to open selection. All the windows have been plastered with signage so that the people know where to go for adoptable dogs, where to look for dogs, and how to differentiate on the pin cards which ones are available, which ones aren't. There was a suggestion there to change our hours of adoptions from two to seven. At that point in time, we did implement our open six days a week. Tuesday and Thursday were open until 6:30 now. We've got a couple of ACAs in the works right now in the hiring process. When they come onboard, we'll look at possibly being open the same hours, Tuesday through Friday, and maybe extend some weekend hours as well. We've got a new adoption, offsite adoption center at Petco that just got a grand opening on Saturday. So we do have a commitment out there as well with a full-time employee, an ACA out there seven days a week. So we've got to be careful with what hours we're going to post. We've got to be able to demand those hours and all the responsibilities that go with it. Create tiered adoption pricing, suggested maybe drop fees after five to seven days. I think we've been pretty aggressive and innovative with our adoption pricing. We seem to have an adoption promotion going at any given time. Right now, we've got one going until the end of the month here for Home for the Holidays, $25 any cat or dog. There are some animals that are cheaper than that, but that's the consistent adoption rate right now. We, as a shelter, have probably the highest adoption fees right now in the region, and I will be coming to the board in the new year to reduce those fees on a more permanent basis, to be more in line with the competition, so to speak, the other shelters. They do adoption promotions all the time, too. We're not the only shelter that faces the overpopulation problem. City of Sacramento's Front Street Shelter and the SPCA are constantly looking for ways to create ways to get adoptions going and moving so that they can free up space. It's not just specific to our shelter. Return to owners.
Excuse me, Dave?
Yeah.
Supervisor Toney.
Yeah, just before you leave that, Dave, the, on the greeter, because again, you basically assigned to volunteers, insufficient staff availability, but I don't need to tell you, you're there all the time, but, you know, certain times of the day and week, you know, you just, you have a small flood of people, and all that activity and energy at the front of the shelter, and a greeter, somebody that can provide direction, can help, you know, and again, they're only one person. But it seems to me that, again, going back to the whole discussion about who you employ, and county staff can do a lot of this work, but, you know, and it shouldn't all just be county staff or volunteers. There are the ability to employ greeters. There are folks that, you know, would gladly do that for some nominal compensation to be out at animal shelter to help people, you know, find their way, a wayfinder. Signs are great, but you guys, there's signs everywhere out there.
Right.
I mean, and, you know, and I just, it seems to me that that's key, because that's the first impression, but also, that's where you got to go, that's where you got to come to, to get out of there if you're going to be looking to adopt an animal so forth. And so, again, working with Dr. Carson and others, it seems to me that's key. I mean, because people that are doing the task at the front desk and so forth, you know, they're occupied. There's a lot of energy up there at any given time, at least when I've been out there for the most part. And I just, it seems to me that that's key, and that you should have your wherewithal ready and, you know, authorization. You need to hire somebody part-time, I mean, to, you know, to be there during certain hours, you know. Again, it is, your open hour's not open to the public all day long anyway. And so, again, I just wanted to make that point. But I wanted to ask you about the open hours. And again, I'm grateful that we're open six days a week, and you've got the, you know, again, congratulations on the Petco Adoption Center, and that's great. That's actually got more open availability than our shelter, you know, seven days a week and the hours that they're in the evening. But there's a bit of a misnomer here, and it concerns me, is, you know, Thursday is 6:30 PM. We cut off adoptions a half hour just because of the processing time and so forth.
Right.
And I've got to imagine that on some Saturdays and Sundays, maybe other days, maybe, you know, Tuesdays after you've had a one-day close, that towards the end of the day is when you're going to get the rush of people, and that, you know, there's missed adoptions, and, you know, well, you got to come back tomorrow, I'm sorry, or two, you know. And I know you work to try to accommodate that. It seems to me, though, and we had this conversation during budget, at least, I don't know what comment was made, about maybe going to, and maybe there's some staffing coverage that it doesn't allow you to go to seven o'clock, because that's still, if you went to seven, you're going to cut it off at 6:30. And so, it kind of belies the actuality, what you're doing, and, you know, if you're open until five o'clock on Saturdays and Sundays, you're cutting off at 4:30. And so, it's always at least a half hour recognizing the processing time. And I guess I'm going to encourage, as a part of the conversation, that, you know, that your open hours may be such, but you can make the adoption hours, because otherwise, you get this short window. You open at noon on a Sunday, and what, by 4:30, you're, it's all over. You can't, you know, you got to come back another day.
Right.
And so, that's a really small window, recognizing that you got to do, you know, what has to occur in the morning before you open. And to me, you know, certainly, once they're in the shelter, finding them homes by virtue of people coming in there looking for a pet, adoptable animal. There are other ways, and there's other strategies talked about here to keep animals out of there. But that seems to me to be key, and it's not to press you on necessarily more hours, but the adoption hours are always shorter than our open hours. And I think we've got to address that.
Okay. Yeah, and we can't address that once we get the other two ACAs onboard. We can, we're looking at, you know, making extended hours for some of the other days, and possibly extending the hours on the weekends. But with the current staffing right now, we would either have to open later to begin with and stay open later, you know, instead of opening at noon on Saturday and Sunday and closing at 4:30, we would have to open the adoption hours, say, at 1:30 to go deeper into the evening. And I don't want to sacrifice at the beginning to gain at the end. A lot of people on the weekends are doing other things in the evening, so sure, some people would come in to adopt, I'm aware of that, but we've got to be real conscious of where our people are and how many people we have that are at the shelter to accomplish the goals that we have. So once we do get the additional ACAs onboard, you know, we will look at extending the hours. As far as closing adoptions down a half hour before we close, that's pretty much required just to get them through the lines at the clerical and process the paperwork and finalize adoption.
No, I get that.
Yeah.
I understand.
But yeah, we are trying to open up more hours to be accessible to the public, because the more accessibility we have, the better adoptions we can do, the more adoptions we can do, and the better off we're going to be in the long run. Return to owners, more advertising. It's suggested that not enough people in the community or the outreach in county jurisdiction know where we are, who we are. So maybe we do need to do some more advertising so that when people lose their animals, the first thought on their mind is, you know, I better check the shelter, instead of waiting for the animal to return home on its own. We do have an ID protocol for animals that come into the shelter wearing ID tags with phone numbers or addresses, microchips. Front clerical staff handles that. PIN cards are put up there for them daily, and we send letters as well. We have extended hold times for those animals. We were trying to do that all electronically not too far a few months back. That didn't tend to work out too well, so it is a paper process. It's easier for people to follow it, and anybody can walk up to the ID book and find out what's going on with a particular animal. We also do, when owners come in, they have financial difficulties and other reasons for not being able to redeem their animals. We do work with them. We waive fees if they'll let us do a spay neuter on the animal before we turn it to them. We do that quite a bit. We'll continue to do that as well. Community cats, we talked about, and we are not going to suspend that program. I think we've talked enough about that already. I don't need to go into too many more details unless somebody has questions on it. I talked a little bit about behavior evaluations. We did have Amy Sadler come out, as I mentioned earlier. I've got another behaviorist coming out in January to do some more hands-on training of the staff with the shelter animals. Hopefully, we can combine the two processes, the play yard groups along with an in-house evaluation to make sure that we're putting animals up for adoption that are suitable for any home that they're going to, and we don't have any liability issues left. There are a few things there at the bottom. Five, we do not test dogs towards cats, and we do not evaluate dog-to-dog aggression by walking dogs past kennel mates or other dogs kennelled in the shelter. It's not a true way to determine whether a dog is dog aggressive or not. There's a lot of anxiety in the animals from being in the shelter. There's a lot of commotion and noise every day for those animals, so they need to be given a fair chance at an evaluation.
Don, excuse me.
Yeah, Dave, before you leave that, but before Dr. Carson and her team visited, we were testing dogs toward cats, and we were, I guess, up until fairly recent.
Just by walking a dog in front of a room that had a cat in it, we didn't do it with all dogs, but dogs that they saw or felt they saw prey drive in in the evaluation room, they would take a little extra step and walk them in front of a cat room, so to speak, and see how they would react. If adoption families said that, you know, we want this dog, but we've got cats, you know, how was it with cats, and it wasn't tested, they would walk in front of like a habitat room just to see what their activity was. We're not doing that anymore.
This talks about, without getting too much detail, but Meet Your Match versus Consider Matchup 2, where it's under review. I don't know what the different protocols are, but I know we've had discussions about, you know, how you test for food aggression, how you introduce other props into the testing. Again, I'm not, certainly not the expert in this field, and I know there may be even differences out there, but what is Matchup 2? Is that the industry standard? Is that what people are utilizing?
Be honest with you, I'm not real familiar with that program. The Meet Your Match, or the one that we've been doing, is something that the SPCA, or the ASPCA introduced us five or six years ago. The Meet Your Match 2 is something we'll definitely look at after our behaviorist comes here in January, and we'll try and combine everything from all the information that we get.
Are you agreeable to forming a behavioral team?
I think.
You didn't address that in the recommendation, that's why I asked that.
Yeah.
Dr. Carson recommends that, and I didn't see.
Yeah, the only problem with that, we can have specific ACAs that are interested in behavior evaluations, but they're not going to be there seven days a week, so you're always going to have those days during the week that that group might not be there. So we will have everybody well-versed on the behavior evaluation process so that there aren't any lapses in days when we can actually do behavior evaluations. The sooner we can get those done, the sooner the dog or cat becomes available to the public. So I think it's important that everybody's well-versed on it, but there will be leaders within the group.
And didn't Dr. Sadler, who was out here, or, I said, Amy Sadler, wasn't it that you did that initial evaluation, you pre-screened dogs basically as they came through intake? That was the whole, at least what I took away from, you know, and you were out there at the same time I was out there, took away that that's what you did, is that, you know, you basically, you, you know, you give a pass, or, you know, you kind of a green, yellow, or red, and all of our dogs got either greens or yellows, I guess, the day she was, you know, the day she was out there, all the breeds that were evaluated. So is that part of our protocol? Is that what we're going to do? Is, or are we going to take them in?
Well, that was Amy Sadler's view of dog behavior evaluations, which is just one view. We are trying that, but we have found that even though a dog is good at intake, and a dog does well in the dog play yards, once they get back into the kennels, it's not always the same every time you take the dog out. So we have had problems with dogs that have been up for adoption that have had some issues. So we've got to look at it, and, you know, we've got to put a safe animal up for adoption that anybody can take home, and with the right guidance and experience and precautions, you know, be successful with that adoption. So I think that just going from intake to a play group is not quite enough for a true dog evaluation. It's a good part of it, but I think we need to do a little more research and probably combine a few different views on how to do that.
Sounds to me like a behavioral team makes sense.
Yeah, well, yeah. We'll have to take Amy Sadler. She had a lot of good things to do, and yeah, she did get all of her dogs out, and they worked well in play groups, except for maybe one or two, I think it was. And, you know, they are doing a wonderful job out there, because getting them out in the play groups reduces their anxiety level and their stress level. It frees them up to exercise and run and be a dog, basically, so that when they're in the shelter for however many hours they are until the next time they come out, they don't get kennel stressed and reactive at their kennel, wanting to get out again, and, you know, reacting to each person that goes by. So it is a big part of it. We talked a lot about the medical division, so I won't go over that anymore, just to say that I am in a fully, full agreement with Dr. Carson and her recommendations for Enrichment, that starts with the play groups. That's what they do. They give the dogs time to allow the dogs to be themselves and act like dogs without any restrictions. So we fully intend to keep that program going. I'd like to get staff more involved in that. Again, it's an allocation of resources. There's so many things to do in the shelter on a given day that we've had a difficult time getting staff out there. It's been sporadic at best, so something we need to try to pay more attention to and try to free some staff up out there. I think some of the other things in here that we've already done and implemented, slide 16, the data, there, we no longer auto-fill the intake screen with normal when the animal comes in. There are several different things that can be put in there by the ACAs, depending on the dog's physical condition and behavior. And we have not done number two yet. That's a, something we've been working on to not list dogs out of the shelter when they're adopted until they actually leave the facility, which, what that means is we've got dogs in the facility that show they've been adopted, but they're really still at the facility waiting for spay neuter. It's something that we are, we recognize, and we're trying to come up with the proper procedure to keep them in the shelter, show them as adopted, yet not out come in until they go home after their surgery. Brings us to euthanasia. We talked a little bit about that earlier. We are, I did add a reason for euthanasia in yesterday's chameleon system, just as kennel stressed, because we had a couple of dogs that were previously thought to be good candidates for adoption, but due to their length of stay in the shelter, they regressed. We didn't have readily available foster homes for them. And we were at a population number in the shelter that we just didn't have enough empty kennels for the dogs that were coming into the shelter. The euthanasia protocol will be reevaluated so that when dogs are selected or animals are selected for euthanasia rather than rehabilitation or medical treatments, it'll be, it'll be the right decision. Not too much else I can say about that right now.
Dave, so on the daily list, it will show up as kennel stress?
Yeah, well, it's not quite refined there yet, because the reason and the condition don't both show up, just the reason shows up. So we got to tweak that a little bit still. We worked on it late yesterday, and I haven't had time to get with Hannah today to try and get.
Okay, I mean, that's what your intent is, though, is to show that.
Yeah. We'll probably have to reprogram the report itself so that it shows both the reason and the condition.
More clarification then. So right now, anything's behavioral, it was just untrainable, unmanageable, and that was a UU. And if that were the, so now you're going to actually specify to a greater degree.
Well, I think we'll keep that part the same, but we'll have the other window show up on the printout as well. So if it says untreatable, unmanageable, and then that would be the reason, and then the condition would be, say, kennel stress, or dog aggression, or something like that.
Okay. Thanks for the explanation.
If you go through that whole report, there were 97 recommendations made by UC Davis. 27 of those were existing practices or things we were already doing that maybe needed a little extra attention. Five of them weren't implemented based on past experience. 21 new ones have been implemented, and there are actually 44 left under evaluation. So I concur with Dr. Carson. We are a department that is faced with a heavy burden every day. We do the best that we can. We've come a long way in the last few years. I remember starting there 15 years ago. It was a completely different department, run completely differently. run completely differently. There were a lot of outcomes that weren't as happy as what we have today. Is there room for improvement? Absolutely. I'm committed to doing that, along with the staff that I have there. I looked for your support in this. Hopefully you can be as supportive as you have in the past. I certainly appreciate everything you've done for us in the last couple of years, especially to get us on this road to, to where we want to be. Thank you very much. If you have questions, I'll, I'll be here.
Thank you, Dave. Very thorough. Any questions for Mr. Dickinson?
I'll wait till we hear from speakers.
Do we have any speakers?
Yeah, I want to wait till we hear from speakers.
Okay. If we don't have any questions, then we'll, oh, sorry, supervisor, we'll go ahead.
Yes, this is something that hasn't come up for a while, but was a, a big topic several years ago, and that is, have we, the idea of having outreach to increase the number of licensed animals, so that we can then have more revenue available to implement more of these recommendations, rather than just looking to the general fund.
Yeah, we haven't done a big push media-wise, but we do oftentimes tell folks that spay and neutering, license your pet is the proper thing and responsible thing to do. Unfortunately, last time I looked in Sacramento County, I think the, the license compliant rate was like 14 percent, so only 14 dogs out of 100 are actually licensed in the county.
Which is, I think about, if I remember about the rate it has been for the last 10 years.
Exactly, right, right. Even when we did the, the big push for licensing and stuff, and we, we offered free licenses for the first year, in order to get a secondary revenue the next year, it, it seems to hover between 14 and 16 percent. That's not only Sacramento area, that, that, that those ratios can be found far and wide. You know, if we could get 50 percent licensing revenue, I mean, we, we probably wouldn't even need a, a general fund, we'd be able to fund ourselves. It's just incredible. There are, there is one province, I think it's up in Canada, for licensing. If you get a, if you have a dog and you get a licensing ticket, it's a $500 fine. So they've got, you know, a 90 percent compliance rate. I, I think their, I think their community is more affluent than what we have here in Sacramento. We have a, a large diversity of animal owners, and, and I don't know if-
We'd have trouble collecting that $500 fine.
Kind of sounds like a common civil-
That's what I was thinking.
After a day?
And, and, you know, and we had, you know, we had a $150 unaltered license fee-
Yes, I remember that.
-and a $50 license fee, and, and, you know, we've reduced those, so we've, we've done what we can, I think. We could do, there's always more that can be done. You know, we could do a big media push on licensing, how successful it would be, I don't know.
Have we tried, this is, because 10 years ago, this wasn't an option, but using social media for a promotion, which is low cost-
Yeah, yeah, we've got a Facebook page and stuff, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dave. We do have four members of the public who have signed up to speak. Just as a general reminder, if you arrive late and you wish to address the board on this matter, you're certainly invited to do so. We do have some new technology that we're introducing. You'll notice we have two iPads at the back of the chambers here that permits members of the public that wish to address the board to actually sign in electronically now, and let us know your name, so we can do our best to pronounce it correctly, and call you in the order that you see up on the screen. So with that, Linda Morgan.
You did put it down?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great.
Bring the microphones down.
Good afternoon.
Bring the microphones down.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Linda Morgan, I'm with Sacramento Feral Resources, and for those of you who are not familiar with our organization, we focus on assisting the community and feral cats in the county. With any issues they may have, we develop community awareness of feral cats and the different options available. So when those of us who are feral cat advocates saw the recommendation for the county to discontinue the feral cat TNR program, obviously, we were just a, a bit concerned about that, because in, in our situation here in the county, we have many people who have feral cats, and until we actually started educating people and making people more aware, many people had no clue of how to handle a feral cat, or what to do, or where to go, or if they could afford it. And it was something that we have begun to let people know. So to discontinue a program at this point in time, even if it's for an interim period, and, and not have a backup alternative, now, I know the comment was made that direct people to other resources for, for altering. However, most of the people we deal with, or many of the people we deal with, are actually people who cannot afford to go and pay a $17 on a Sunday clinic, or a $15 on a weekday clinic. And so they're, they're looking at maybe altering five to 15 or 20 cats that they have let go, or they moved into a neighborhood, and these cats are currently existing there, and someone wants to do something about it, and finally steps in, but they hesitate to do anything, because they look at the, the bottom line, and they say, I can't afford this. So what we're hoping is that this kind of a program can continue, and ideally, I understand that this, through the county, would be return to field, but at this point in time, it did refer to feral cat and TNR, so that we're hoping that this would be available. To my knowledge, for the county, like I said, there is no other free resource for people to, to take advantage of. So when more than a few cats are involved, then what do they do? They face the cost of the $17 per cat, or they determine that I can't do that, and if you can't help me, and there's no place that can help me and assist me, I'm going to let it go. We run into people like that all the time. Sacramento Feral Resources began about three years ago. We have an online website where people in the community can actually file a report with us, and submit the report. We look at their information, we determine what kind of help or direction we may be able to provide them, and then we go forward from there. Our goal is to educate them enough so that they can actually go out and become involved in the trapping process, and alter the cats in their community, and return them, and it's a supported colony. But that doesn't always happen, so it's really important to continue some kind of a support system for these people. If, and I, I think the, I guess, I want to go back to say that the Community Cats Program actually started a few years ago, and I, I believe that that came through the County Board of Supervisors at the time. And since that time in 2012, that program has been built up, and more people are becoming aware of the feral cats in the community, and what can be done, and they've been taking advantage. So I do believe that the numbers are reflected somewhat in, in the shelters around here, because they're having, I know that the, I think their RTF program, both in the county and the city this year, with my understanding, that there were approximately 1,000 cats that were cycled through that program. So as more people hear about it, the need for that becomes greater. So how do you direct these people, and how do you control these feral cats? A prime example of not controlling the feral cats would be a client that we had about a year ago, who had a colony of 19 cats. And she was actually cited by the county, and she got, received a warning, and she didn't know what to do, so we worked with her, and she bred it traps, she took 19 cats to the shelter, she had them altered, there were eight pregnant cats. So we had 19 cats, had the cats not been altered through this program, in two months, there would have been 62 cats. And so people just-
Can we get your concluding remarks, please?
Pardon?
Can we get your concluding remarks, please?
Oh, yes, absolutely. So what I'm hoping is that the, that the, that the board can support financially the community as we work through a feral cat program. It's, we need, we need the funding.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
This is a friendly reminder, we do have a three-minute limit on public speakers now, so that everyone has a chance to address the board that so chooses. Okay, David Verdugo.
Good afternoon. My name is David Verdugo. I'm one of the animal care attendants at the Sacramento County Animal Care Regulation on Ratchell Road. I've been active with the shelter for about five years now, and employed for a little under two years. I work in the intake, euthanasia, and behavior evaluation areas of the shelter. These three areas, I, we feel have a common, common flaw, which is the flawed behavior evaluation system. Day after day, we intake any number of animals, the number of animals that we intake, as well as the number of adoptions we do throughout the week, are equal. It kind of creates a lack of resources or space here in the shelter. Behavior evaluation system has devolved, in our opinion, from something that's been very, what used to be very meticulous and extensive to determine the best outcome for adoptability of an animal, to seeing if the dog and cat survive a heartworm microchip in a playgroup session out in our shelter. In this, in this, what happens is that the dogs that participate in prey groups are, virtually everything passes. And as great as it sounds, it, we're not providing a proper behavioral analysis from there. When we passed a dog, it meant that we did see something in the dog, that it could stay behaviorally stable out on the adoption floor for an extended period of time, until it reached its forever home, until it went home, and the likelihood of it returning back to the shelter due to of any aggressive nature was greatly limited and diminished. When we failed, when we did fail a dog in the kennel, we knew it was for the safety of the public. We obviously, for liability reasons, did not want to put an animal out there in the community that we felt was going to do harm, and rather than wait for that animal to inflict harm on another individual, and our, and our greatest fear is a child who often comes into our shelter, we wanted to prevent that from happening. When, with the way the behavior evaluations and playgroup system is set up now, we are pretty much sending these animals to environments where they're pretty much being set up to fail. We have countless dogs that are returned to the shelter, who are returned due to not being able to get along with a fellow animal in the home, being aggressive towards other people, and resource guarding as well. Comment to our counseling at the facility, we, we do find that a lot of these animals do come back to the facility for these exact reasons, which leads into another issue, which I know you guys have commonly heard far too much of, is overpopulation at the shelter. It's my firm belief that an animal is not meant to live at the shelter. It's my firm belief that an animal, albeit adoptable or not, or the feral animal that comes in the shelter, the shelter is designed to house these animals, the neglected, the abandoned, or the lost, until the, until it's reunited with its owner or finally adopted. Currently, we're not equipped to behaviorally modify every animal with negative, negative behaviors in the facility, to the, to the expectations of some of the groups, and some of the individuals and volunteers of our shelter. If we did fail an animal, we deemed it was for the safety of the public, and if it was have to be, it did, it was meant to be euthanized, we understood it was for the safety of the public, and it was the best outcome for the dog with the available resources on hand. We ask that we just, that you support our efforts. We do ask that you understand that our workload is overloaded, and that humane treatment of the animals has not taken a backseat. We just want to make sure that safety of the public, when we put these animals out there, have not taken a backseat as well. We want the takeaway from our shelter to be a place to come, not to, not a place of return aggressive animals, but a place to adopt their forever friend. If you have any questions or comments.
Thank you. Rosemarie Lindeman?
Yes, I'm Rosemarie Lindeman, and I'm actually just here, sue heat and slat, I should come out on behalf of some of the trappers, meaning that I'm a community-involved person that has donated of my own time, transport numerous hours, going out there in the dark of night, to set traps out in community areas that nobody else wants to venture, such as trailer home parks, corporate parks, residents, residential neighborhoods that are not so good. And we feel that, I guess we were concerned that Dr. Carsten, in eliminating or wanting to nix part of the program with the shelter, would be a step backward. We have developed, I think, a great network of volunteers with the, in the greater county area, insofar as trapping, I want to acknowledge all of the trappers that are here today, that we are taking a risk in getting these animals into cages. We take them in, and our concern is that once we bring them to the shelter, if they were turned away, there's no way we are going to be able to re-trap those animals. And what will happen then is, rather than curtailing or stemming this overpopulation of feral animals, or feral cats in particular, we would, we would be contributing to an overpopulation situation that's already in Sacramento, just abominable. So I just, I'm, I want to just give kudos to Dave Dickinson, because he has done so much. I came in here actually wanting to be critical of him, but I have to say that I remember the old shelter, which I think a lot of you do too, and yes, there are so many inefficiencies. I've had my cats at the shelter with RTF that I've not caught, these are not cats that I own, these are cats that I'm getting called by neighbors, and, and word of mouth, would, Rose, you're a trapper, will you come out and catch these cats, for this is disabled man that lives on the railroad tracks, and he can't do it himself? Would you transport, would you do this? This is all out of my pocket. So having a, a vehicle or resource like free spay and neuter, or a low copay, has helped me. I'm a travel agent by trade, I'm not a, a hunter. But I do have to say that the, the current shelter, as dismal as the return to field program is, or was, I think it's an asset. It would be a step backwards, if you look at cities nationwide that have come on board with TNR, it does take the burden off the shelter ultimately in the long run, because overpopulation is a huge issue in communities across the country. So thank you for your attention, and I do also say I was very impressed by Dr. Carson's evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our last speaker is Lisa Kirk.
Hi, my name is Lisa Kirk. I'm a trapper in both SAC County and Halo, and what I think you need to understand is return to field is very different than for me going out and assisting the public in trapping their cats. Return to field, I did it as a pilot project in Contra Costa County with no help from the county. There were three of us that did this, and we saved 650 lives. County did not help us, they did not pay for anything. We had to pull those cats within a timeframe, and the fortunate thing is while all the trappers up here were using your services and kind of impacting animal services, we were bringing Contra Costa cats up to SAC SPCA and paying the $17 to get them spayed and neutered. So what I would really like, and I could see where this was going to eventually impact animal services, because Contra Costa County, that's a much larger area, had about 750 cats they killed on a regular basis each year. Return to field is to save those lives. So you have a smaller county, and that should have been lower, and I think what you got impacted by was trappers assisting people in bringing cats into the animal services. Animal Services is not a spay and neuter clinic. So that's why I would like to see Cynthia and others work on getting these groups to use SAC SPCA and the Animal Spay and Neuter Clinic. But these animals that we're assisting should not go in the shelter. As a trapper, I'm helping someone, I would never take a cat into a shelter for spay and neuters. That's not what I do, and I could lose that cat in the system, because I'm basically surrendering. How much does this cost? If I'd have done this with another trapper out of Galt, we would have impacted the county services by another 600 cats. So I think you need to look at how many are true return to field, tighten up that program, fund the other programs so trappers can have their costs paid at the other community clinics that are available, because nonprofits do it better. I, you know, and that's who should be doing your, your spay and neuters, not your animal services. So, you know, just, like I said, two of us, three of us did all of TNR for the last year, and it's possible for individuals to do it without impacting the county. So I hope that the funding, there's funding for SAC SPCA for their Sunday clinic, that's where if we're trapping feral cats, we should be taking them. It's $17 a cat. I would ask that you consider at least giving them $60,000 for the next year, and then these trappers can use that, and it won't impact your animal services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chair, just before Lisa leaves, Lisa, you're aware that we did make arrangements for the South County zip codes to continue to use the SPCA for some of the very reasons that you pointed out, so.
Okay, bring it back to the board for deliberation.
Ms. Chair, if I could maybe just ask Dave to come back just for a second, I want to, I know we have a set of recommendations here, and he went through quite a bit of material in a quick amount of time, and I thank you for that, and certainly, thanks for your work, Dave. This- This point about the rounds, though, seems to me, and it's not embodied in the recommendation as much as it just, you know, it's your response as director, certainly probably consultation with Dr. Carson. And because the recommendations that are before us include direction to create some new job classifications, which will take time, and, you know, again, funding hasn't been approved for hiring in those positions. But what I do hear, and maybe there's some budget savings that could be allocated so you could actually do that, because I hear those are key pieces. And I heard from Dr. Carson as well that, you know, she's willing to help with implementation, but there's got to be, you know, the ability to see some daylight. And part of that is the staff support to accomplish that. So I guess my question is, is that would that being known, are we going to be able to get to rounds? Because again, these positions aren't going to be funded, and some of that goes back to additional veterinary help. You have some contract authority. I don't know if you can seek more to do that. If nothing else, a plan for how we're going to deal with this in the interim, because it seems to me that a lot of that comes back to efficiencies, and you're going to be looking for some of those, and you've addressed those recommendations. But in the intervening period of time that's going to take for us to implement some of the recommendations, particularly as it relates to personnel, and a number of your responses relate to it as well, it takes somebody to accomplish these. You know, would you be prepared to come back shortly after the first of the year with a plan, working with Mr. Linder, Dr. Carson, I guess with, you know, Brad and Nav, to figure out how, again, at least in the intervening part of time, we can begin to introduce that for all the animals in the shelter? Because it seemed to me that was key. Now, if I... My takeaway is different than what was intended than Dr. Carson, and you can tell me, but that seemed to be a very key piece. There's a lot of things embedded in there, but that seemed to be very key to the animal welfare, and along with obviously behavioral, the intake, all the things we're talking about, but...
Yeah, I think the best-case scenario would be for... to have a medical staff personnel, a doctor of veterinary medicine, along with an RVT and a kennel supervisor, senior, perform that walkthrough on a daily basis. We're just not there yet with time allotment. I can certainly speak with the medical division and see if maybe they can rearrange their surgeries somehow, prior to maybe finding somebody else that can do these rounds, but, you know, like a veterinarian, shelter director of medicine, and so forth. But I think right now, in the ten-hour day with the chores that they have, it is going to be difficult. We do have a senior officer that can do population rounds, and, you know, they go through the shelter and make sure that all the animals are where they're supposed to be. But they're not veterinarians, and they can't detect all the different ailments that an animal might have either. So it's a tough one to do, but it's something I'm willing to look at.
Well, and I think maintaining surgeries is important, because that's where you get to the backlog. And I, you know, that's where you backlog dogs and cats, and, you know, it breaks down on that end as well. I mean, it goes to the, I think, the multi-level and the complexity of this. And so, again, I just want to offer... I know you're looking for a recommendation here, and, you know, I'm prepared to support what's been outlined. It's a pretty brief outline, but maybe it's not just for you to answer. I just think figuring this out is going to be a bit of a task, but I think the animals deserve it, and I think that certainly the support that you're going to need to implement. And again, I want to thank, you know, our senior administrative staff for their, you know, work and support. But this is going to... You know, there's some key pieces. And, you know, every day that passes, you know, to Dr. Carson's point, you know, we're teetering a bit. And I get that sense. You know, you don't have to necessarily affirm that or not. But I just... I think that, you know, getting to these recommendations sooner rather than later, some of the physical stuff and some of the things required budget, okay, I get that. That takes a while to get to that. But some of these things have been implemented already. There are some other things that are going to be key, though, to, I think, you know, not only morale, but also of, you know, getting to the essence here, and that is, is to having a shelter that we all want to be, you know, that's good for the animals. And so maybe we can come back... Ms. Chair, I guess I would just offer this, that since it wasn't part of the recommendations, I don't want to do it on the fly here. But, you know, come back in, you know, in early January with at least just a brief item that would say, "Here's how we're going to do this in the interim if we give you a direction to go ahead today." Because otherwise, you know, we'll see in March, and we won't be... We'll maybe be a little closer to hiring those positions, but they won't be filled. And, you know, the frustration level could go off the charts by then, even with your best effort.
And maybe with the contracted vets being... Having vets doubled up certain days of the week, that might give them an opportunity to do some daily rounds as part of their regimen. And for the next month or so, and maybe sometime beginning of the year, we'll see how that goes and, you know, see if we can put something into implementation.
Okay. Again, I don't expect you to do it on the fly, but I just wanted to pose it, because that seemed to be very key, Ms. Chair and my colleagues, to a lot of what, you know... If we're going to set the tone here, and again, Dr. Carson's going to stand by us, working with you and Rob and others, then I think we need to know there's going to be some relief in the animals, though, that those six principles are, you know, that's the key focus into what anybody else offered here, as well as testimony with the community and certainly in shelter. Those are key. And, Mr. Chair, if I could just... I don't... Brad or Nav, if you have any other thoughts on what you've heard as well? I think that's important.
No, I think it is. I think we have some salary savings we can look at. There's other efficiencies we can glean. There are positions yet to be filled. I think there's a number of things we can evaluate to meet some of the highest priority objectives that have been laid out today. And I think we'd like to report back on that pretty quickly.
Okay. Well, again, I think a quicker report back on that would be useful, because there's been a lot of times this past, and, you know, and each day is another day in the shelter. And, you know, it can be a better day, or it can be a worse day. And I just... To me, it's critical. And I would say that there's some analogy to when we've had other reports about other parts of our county family and system, where we've, you know, had, you know, certainly a lot of good efforts, but we've had, you know, some areas for improvement or deficiencies. And we track those with those recommendations, and again, to come through the consultant. I think it's going to be very key, just as you did in your outline, but that there's some performance measures that we, you know, we measure this by. And obviously, it's going to be, you know, the animal welfare and the day-to-day operations. But I guess I'd like to see us, you know, come back, certainly with the plan you mentioned, very shortly. But when you're back here in March, and I've even set a date to continue to, that we've got... We know we're at boom, boom, boom. We're working on these things, that we're achieving them, that, you know, we're struggling with this one, that we need to, you know... Again, we'll be in pre-budget discussions at that point in time, and we're going to have a better idea as it relates to the longer term. But I think that's key. I just think there's too much at stake, and when it comes to, you know, the people we serve, and certainly the lives of the animals that we're entrusted with, I don't think we can, you know... Failure's not an option, or falling into chaos is not an option. We've got to pull this thing together, and I think there's been a commitment by this board, I don't think I know, relative to certainly the resources and the support. And I want to thank my colleagues for their willingness to do that in support of you, Dave, and the shelter. I mean, there hasn't been any lack of that when it comes to financial resources, or, you know, giving you the, you know, certainly the latitude and the flexibility I think you need as director and your senior staff. And I think the community's been great. They've stepped up over the years when we were really lean and have continued to support their shelter. And I want us to be the best we can be for the animals, because they don't have anybody but us to look out for them, and certainly our responsibility to the broader community to, you know, take care of the animals and make sure that, you know, that we do things that are of their interest. And so I guess I would like to see you come back, and I would, you know, be willing to make a motion, Ms. Chair, to support the recommendations, that we... You come back in maybe January with a short report, if that's okay, as to how you can see us doing some quicker implementation of some of these things. And then have a full report back in March, if that's acceptable to my colleagues, with a, you know, a full rundown on where we're making progress, where we're, you know, challenged, and things that you're going to need from this board and this community to make us the best we can be. So I would move the recommendations with the additions of the report back in January on some options to have quicker implementation of some of these things with budget savings or whatever that notion is.